I'd like to call this meeting of the Clay County Commission to order. We will begin with our invocation. And we have, I hope I've got the right title, Reverend Rudy Garcia. Is that correct? If you'd please come forward and when you do identify yourself, identify your congregation, because we'd like to acknowledge, you know, where it is that you are from. Make sure that the green light is on. There you go. And so, please proceed.
All right. Thank you. I'm President Rudy Garcia from the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints, and we're located here in the Liberty area. Our dear Father in Heaven, we are grateful to meet this evening as we gather together for the opening of the Clay County Commission's Business Session. We're grateful for these elected leaders and their willingness and sacrifice that they give to the county and to the residents of this great county. We're grateful for them, and we pray that Thou would bless them as they meet together and as they counsel and make decisions, that they will be inspired, that they will know Thy will as they contemplate and consider the needs of the residents of the county and the effects that it will have on each of us. We're grateful to be citizens of this great country. We pray that Thou will continue to bless our country to be a place of freedom, a place of refuge, and a place of growth and of strength for those that are residents of this great country. We're grateful for Thee and Thy Son, Jesus Christ, and we again are thankful to all those who sacrificed their time to ensure our safety and that we have those things that we stand in need of. We say this in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you very much. Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Nolte.
Here.
Commissioner Withington.
Here.
Commissioner Lawson.
Here.
Commissioner Wagner.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Here.
Commissioner Thompson.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
With that, is there a motion related to approval of this evening's agenda? Hold on a second. I did not get over to the right screen. Please proceed, Commissioner Lawson.
Okay. Thank you. I'd like to move 2023-248.
Oh, we're on the agenda part. I'm sorry. We need a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry. You gotta...
I move...
There you go.
Okay. I move we approve tonight's agenda.
Motion's been made for the approval of this evening's agenda. Is there any discussion? Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Withington. Do you have something?
Commissioner Lawson would like to move something from the consent agenda. So is that, can we do that? We don't do that now. We do that after we approve the agenda?
Yeah, I was kind of a, I'm afraid I was a point of version last time. Let me check. Is the best method for us to do that is to make that motion when we take up the consent agenda? Is that the best time to make that motion?
Right. The proper order is to allow the agenda as a slate to be approved, and then once we move on to the consent section to remove things to discuss.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure Commissioner Lawson got her...
I appreciate that. I mean, when I did it last week, I unfortunately did not do it quite as properly as I would always like. Further discussion on the motion to approve the agenda. Seeing none, you are recognized to close. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Lawson.
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Withington.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. We are now moving into the public comments section. My understanding is we have a gentleman who would like to make comment, who is coming in online. Given the noise, and if we could, I would like to go ahead and have him identify himself, and let's do that as kind of a sound check before he goes forward with his comments.
Hello?
Mr. Stoyland, could you identify yourself? This is the Clay County Commission.
Just one minute, sir. I'm trying to turn the volume on my phone up.
Okay.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. Go right ahead.
Hi. Who is this? Hello?
Hello.
Time to proceed.
Yeah, I can hear you.
Go ahead and proceed then with your comments.
Oh, is this regarding the stadium?
Your public comments that you want to talk about, you can go ahead right now.
Oh, okay. I just wanted to bring to the county's attention that some serious studies about the effect of stadiums on communities were done by the Minneapolis Federal Reserve Board. And if you just Google Federal Reserve Stadium Studies, you can get a copy of it. And the gist of what the stadium surveys that were done was that the benefits of building a new stadium accrue primarily to the stadium owners and the local businesses immediately around them. And the facilities that are partly paid for by public funds are really seldom able to pay back, and so that means that county taxpayers end up subsidizing private businesses. And as a retired person, I would prefer not to have to pay taxes for a new stadium. So that's my point of view. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stoyland. And by the way, do feel free to reach out to us and make comments in the future if you are so inclined.
Okay. That was hard to hear, but I've had a chance to say what I wanted to, and I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Stoyland.
Okay. Bye-bye.
Are there any other members of the public who would like to make comment at this time? Seeing none, I think it's noteworthy. I don't know that we've had anybody call in before to make public comments like that. Possibly so, but certainly I'm glad that we're expanding our ability for citizens to comment. If, you know, if this is the first time, great. If not, even better, I guess. That moves us to the consent agenda. What we will do is we will look for a motion for the consent agenda. No, no, no. You need to do that first, then there's motion. Okay. This is a little bit different than usual. So Administrator, if you would go ahead and introduce the consent agenda, then I will entertain a motion from, I believe, Commissioner Lawson to make some suggestions on the consent agenda. So please proceed.
The consent agenda allows the Commission to act upon items considered to be routine and approved in one motion. These may include items that have been reviewed by the Commission in a prior session. There will be no separate discussion unless a Commissioner requests that an item be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. On today's consent agenda, there are four items. Resolution 2023-248 is approving invoice payments for Clay County from July 14th through July 25th for 499 invoices totaling $1,353,098.01. Also approving minutes from May 17th and May 24th. Also approving Resolution 2023-247, approving a memorandum of understanding between North Kansas City School District and the Clay County Sheriff's Office for School Resource Officers for the 2023-2024 school year, and Resolution 2023-252 approving donations of three paperback novels to the Jesse James Birthplace Museum from Terry and Leona James.
Thank you. I will be recognizing Commissioner Lawson here in a moment. I think maybe one of the things that we should think about doing is when a Commissioner moves something off of the consent agenda onto regular, my inclination is to put it on at the end unless there's a request from the Commissioner to place it at some other point. That way, it's kind of a default, and we keep the agenda going, the regular agenda as scheduled. But if a Commissioner would care to place it somewhere else in the regular agenda, I don't see any reason why we couldn't honor that request. With that, Commissioner Lawson.
Yes, I'd like to move 2023-248 from the consent agenda to the regular agenda, and we can do that down at the end of the agenda. That's fine with me.
Very good. There is no required vote. Any Commissioner may make that request. So 2023-248 will be on our regular agenda, and that will be following 2023-250. Any further discussion? Is there a motion for the adoption of the consent agenda? Commissioner Withington.
I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Motion's been made for the approval of the consent agenda. Are there any discussion? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Withington.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson.
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. That brings us to our regular agenda. Excuse me. The first item on our regular agenda is 2023-251. Administrator?
Resolution 2023-251.
I'm sorry, I can't quite, I'm having trouble hearing you.
Sorry, all the fans. Resolution 2023-251 is a request for the waiver of fees, interest, and penalties and taxes due to a county error. The applicant is Mr. Radkowski, who is in the audience. We also have the county assessor, Tracy Baldwin is here, and also the county collector, Barbara O'Reilly, to answer any questions that the Commission may have.
Very well. Would the applicant care to come forward and give us some information related to his request? Excuse me. And make sure the green light is on. Please identify yourself for the audio recordings, and then proceed. There's a button at the, there you go.
There we go. Well, thank you for allowing me to come forward. The question I have is, and I'm sure the assessor's got all the information, but I came into, I went to go license a vehicle, found out that I needed a tax receipt, came to the courthouse here to get a tax receipt. They couldn't find any of my information backing way up to 2018. Since that time, I had bought a couple of different vehicles, sold them, but they couldn't still find any information. And when I was with the assessor downstairs, she tried to get me to own other vehicles that were in my family's name, trying to place me in other vehicles to assess me for taxes, which I thought was kind of odd. I gave her all the information I had, what have you. So she sent me away. She said, "Your information will be across the way." I went across the way, and of course, I've got a couple of tax bills for vehicles. One, of course, I owned and sold, and the other one I owned and sold two years prior. So it was gone before she even assessed the taxes for it. So I don't understand, one, they didn't have any information on me, so that means they haven't sent anything to the House. And I was told it was my responsibility to come to the courthouse and pay taxes when they're due, that type of deal, which I understand that. I've been in Clay County since 1995, never any problems with any taxes. I'm sure there's a late fee or two that I've incurred over that time period, but I've never had a problem like this. I'm all for paying what is owed, what is due. The tax bill I got, I feel, was pretty exuberant. The fees and what have you were double what the taxes were. But I was under the impression, I was told that this was my fault. But the fact that we've got a vehicle that had been sold years ago, I'm paying taxes on it for years, I didn't even have it, didn't set well with me, and that's why I inquired as to what to do about it, and of course, they sent me here, so.
Are there any questions from the Commission for the applicant? Commissioner Lawson.
So the vehicle that you sold, that's kind of the one that is causing the problem, correct?
Yeah, that's the biggest problem, yeah.
So when that was sold, then whoever purchased that vehicle?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, you signed your title, and they took the title.
Sure.
Then did they go ahead and title that?
It was sold to CarMax down at Shawnee. I got their, well, I did, I sent it in to you folks, I believe, the receipt. They bought it from me and what have you, and, you know, you do the, the only thing I know to do is to fill out the bottom form on the, on your title and send it in to Jefferson City. That's the only thing I know to do.
Okay. So then they bought it, and then whatever, at that point, do they go ahead and put it in their name, or they just hold it until they sell it?
Until they sell it. So, and, you know, CarMax is a pretty big company. I don't doubt that they've got the ample system down, amply.
I've got a question for Barbara, or Collector.
Let's go ahead.
Or you, yeah, Barbara. Yeah, come on, hon. So Barbara...
Sir, if you would step to one side so Barbara could use the microphone, but please remain kind of close at hand. We have more questions.
Normally, when somebody like a CarMax or who, whatever dealership buys it, how do they get you the documentation that it no longer belongs to a particular individual?
It would come from the assessment department, and I don't know how they get the information. Anything changes through the assessment department, they give it to us, and then we change it.
Okay.
So it would have to first come from the, to the assessment department.
Okay.
And I'm not for sure how they get their information.
Okay. Well, then, Mr. Tracy, can you tell us how that documentation works?
Yes, Commissioner. Tracy Baldwin, Clay County Assessor. Once again, Missouri is a self-reporting state, so we have to rely on what the taxpayer provides us. We do have limited access to the DMV, but it's, just what I say, is very limited, so we have to rely. Once we kind of went over this paperwork with Mr. Radkowski, we had found, and he, I think he actually provided us a copy of the bill of sale for the vehicle that was sold. In that time, we were planning to do away with this bill because he proved that it wasn't owned, so we asked the question of what he did have for that following year, and it turned out to be the exact same year and model of Chevy pickup. The only difference was, was one was a 1500 and one was a 2500. So we removed the 1500 when we found out that he had sold it and provided documentation, but we had to add the new pickup that he actually had in his name, which in turn generated a corrected bill, which he has currently with the Collector's Office for a different model of vehicle.
So is it, is it the contention here, the difference in the old and the new assessment?
Yep. That's the new bill that was created once Mr. Radkowski gave us the correct information on what vehicle that he actually had.
I see. Okay.
We had started the process to waive that whole bill when we found out that the truck was actually the wrong truck that had previously been assessed. And then that's why we had reached out to him to ask what vehicle was, and then he provided us it was a 2500 Chevy. We had to do a bill correction, and that created a new bill in turn, actually.
So when we did that, we just did it from when it was sold till current? Is that the way we did?
Yes. We have to go by January 1, and if we don't have any proof, that's what we go by. In this case, he provided us the proof that that truck was sold, but in turn, he had an actual different truck. And the biggest confusion was it was the same year, same model, just different model or different weight limit of vehicle.
Weight, uh-huh.
I could kind of go over the whole process of where we started and finished and got to this point. Mr. Radkowski came into the Assessor's Office, 7/11 of 2023. He'd not been assessed since 2018. So per statute, we could have assessed him from 2018 all the way up to 2023. Per policy in my office, we only do two years prior because that's what the DMV requires for receipts. So essentially, we could have billed him another basically $800 two times for those years, which we didn't. We just put him on for the two years. After assessing Mr. Radkowski, that's when we found out that there was two different vehicles, and the administrative officer had brought the information down. We reached out to Mr. Radkowski and found out that the vehicles were different, created a new bill. So the 22 bill that he's referencing of the Chrysler, I believe, that's a correct bill. It just never had been assessed, and the reason on the statement from Mr. Radkowski was he never received a bill, he wouldn't have received a bill because he hadn't done the assessment. So that's where we have to rely on what the taxpayer provides us.
Any further questions? Okay. Commissioner Johnson. Yeah, for clarification, and either one of you can answer this. So you hadn't paid any personal property tax since 2018. Is that correct?
According to him, that's correct.
Do you dispute that?
I don't, I can't tell you.
Okay.
I know that we had a Buick licensed in my name and my daughter's name, and I know that had to get to plate it. Again, we had to have paid property taxes.
So prior to 2018, had you paid property taxes in this county?
Oh, yeah. So we've got, there's, in my family, there's eight vehicles on license right here in Clay County.
So if you paid property taxes prior to 2018, was it kind of odd that you weren't paying anything for the last five years?
Yeah. There's a lot, I mean, I don't honestly look at that stuff. I honestly just hand a check off.
Sure.
Or send somebody up. I'm generally, I've been an over-the-road truck driver for a quarter while, so there's a lot of stuff I do remotely or rely on someone else in the family to take care of. No other problems have existed until this particular one, which I find it odd.
Yeah, so just, just for your understanding, so you know what we can and can't do.
Sure.
What it sounds like, obviously, it slipped through the cracks on you. You didn't pay it, you didn't report it, whatever. That happens to people. But for us to be able to reimburse you, we have to show that it was our fault, the county's fault.
Yeah.
And it's not at fault because they didn't send you a bill, the way our state works, and those aren't rules that we make. Those are rules made by the state. So we're basically, by state law, our hands are tied. Unless we can show, you can show, or we can see that, hey, they made a mistake, we, the county, made a mistake in this bill for some reason, then our hands are pretty much tied. We really couldn't give you the money if we wanted to.
That I understand. What I don't understand is how you have vehicles licensed in Clay County through the state, and the state and the county can't get together and have the system straight.
You and me both, brother.
Unfortunately, it becomes my fault, my problem, and out of my pocket, because the county wants their taxes, the state wants their taxes, but you guys can't communicate together, and I go to one roof. I mean, my state taxes get paid out of my check, but when I need to take care of something like this that has been taken care of since 1995...
So what you just said about basically the state not talking to the county?
Sure.
Amen, brother. I'm with you. That's been a pet peeve of mine for a long time. They don't talk like they should, and I wish they did, but unfortunately, we don't. And I think maybe we're talking about ways to fix that. There's been some talk in the past about ways to fix that, but bottom line, it's not fixed, as frustrating as it is. To me, it's an embarrassment to government that we don't have that fixed, but we don't. And the way the state law is set up, the onus is on you to report that to the county. And I know you don't want to hear that, but I apologize. I think that's what we're stuck with.
No, it's not, it's not that I don't want to handle or take care of my responsibility. I think that's, that part, I think we're missing that. The gentleman that brought up this other truck, I appreciate that. That was, and this other truck, incidentally, owned it for 18 days of that year because the other person didn't license it in a timely fashion in 2020, so I end up paying the taxes that he's assessing for 2021 for 18 days, which I assume will be close to the same amount for the other truck that they didn't do their homework on and assessed me for. And that's, that's my, you know, and then I was told that's a state issue, not a county issue, or an assessor's issue, which I don't understand that because I'm being assessed by the assessor for that 18 days on that truck because somebody else didn't title it. And that's unfortunate. That's out of my pocket. That's a lot of money. Not only that, but the late fees on top of that, because I didn't pay for a truck that wasn't assessed, that I didn't own, but yet somebody else owned. I mean, it's, it seems to me like it's a, just a complete utter chaotic mess, whether I got a form in the mail to fill out and from the assessor, which I haven't seen one this year yet. This is 2023, we're halfway through the year. I don't know when those come out, but I've never had any issues up to this point, and it just struck me as odd. How many, how many wrongs can we have in this situation? There's several, you know, and I keep hearing it's my fault. I sure as heck don't want to pay any more, so I'm not going to drag something out just to not to pay taxes. It's pay it, get it over with, get it done with, move on. But this seems like, oh, Brad, you didn't do what you were supposed to do, so we're going to assess you. It's utterly ridiculous how much fees and the whole thing for this, and then it's, it's not the county's fault, it's not the state's fault, but it's Brad's fault because he didn't want to come forward and pay the bill.
Well, I'll tell you...
He could have reached out and called me, my gosh. You haven't got an assessment for a guy for four years, and yet he's got vehicles licensed?
Yeah. I tell you, if anybody here on this Commission can change that, we would. The system is not a good system. I'll tell you that right now. You've outlined some of those issues. The fees and the penalties, they're not fair, I don't think. I think they're outrageous. I'd change it right now if I could. That's where we're stuck. And you're not the first person who's come to us with this issue, and probably won't be the last, and it's unfortunate. I know the Assessor's Office and the Collector's Office, they have to hear this all the time, but our hands are tied by the state on this right now, and there's not a whole lot we could do, except apologize and say, "I'm sorry, they put the onus on you to report it and to pay it, and that fell through the cracks for the last five years," so...
And I appreciate and understand that, but I bought a new car here in Liberty in 2021. To get that car and license it, I would have had to pay taxes. So this is where that 218 mark doesn't make sense. I would have had to pay property taxes.
Right.
To get that car license in 2021, which is this Buick on this sheet. So to do that, I had to pay 2020 taxes. So to tell me that there was no taxes on Brad since 2018 does not make any sense.
So you're saying that you paid taxes that that haven't been that they're not reporting that you paid? Is that what you're saying?
Well, according to their mess, I mean, I've got a car, a Buick on here that I bought in 2021, sold it in 2022. To buy that car, to license that car, I had to pay property taxes to do so. Does that make sense?
When you bought it?
Yes.
In 2021?
In 2021.
You paid property taxes?
August of 2021, to buy that car, I would have had to have show property taxes paid for 2020 and previous.
Well, that's paid when you go to the DMV and you register, right?
No, the the well, I would have had to come to the courthouse and either get a waiver or have a piece of paper saying I paid my personal property taxes.
To register it?
To register the vehicle.
Yeah.
Which is exactly what happened at this time. I went to go register vehicle, and they said I haven't paid property taxes since 2018.
Well, that's because you hadn't reported any of those vehicles before. They didn't know you had those to pay on.
But I would have had to report, I would have had to report it up to 2020 to register my 2021 or that vehicle in 2021. That's where that doesn't make sense.
Tracy, maybe you can help explain that a little better, please.
He would have paid sales tax at that time. He would, it would have been a two-year tag, so he wouldn't have had to prove, he wouldn't have had to add it to the assessment. And that's why there is a 22 bill created that he needed to go get his license plates. That's what started this. He had to renew his plates. That's why he came in. So he wouldn't have had to at the time when he purchased it, he would have had to have assessed it, and then we would have billed him for the the previous year because January 1. So if he bought it in 8/5 of 2021 is when Mr. Rakovsky bought the Buick, it wouldn't have went on till 22's bill. That's what one of the waivers is for, is this 22 bill that wasn't reported.
Okay.
I'm actually not talking about that particular car being taxed. I'm talking about previously taxed to license that car.
Yeah, so well, don't confuse the sales tax with the personal property tax.
Not sales tax, personal property tax. You have to have a personal property tax statement to license your vehicle. That has to be paid. That's one of the prerequisites to go in there and license your vehicle. So for me to go license that car, they wouldn't have let me license that car unless I showed that I paid personal property taxes.
Right, but it can't show you paid personal property taxes on things that aren't personal property, that's not reported, that you own.
Right, up to that. Well, I would have had to have a waiver saying that I didn't have any property.
Well, apparently, the issue is that you haven't reported it for the last five years or several years.
Well, that's that's what that's what they're saying. The vehicle I had before that was this white pickup that they figured out was wrong. That was the vehicle before this 2021. Just anybody else picking up something that I'm missing, or I'm not I'm not following?
Commissioner Withington, I don't know if you wanted to address what Commissioner Johnson said, or if you had new points to raise, but you're recognized.
No, this doesn't have to do with what Commissioner Johnson wanted. But Tracy, question for you. So every year, we send out those little postcards?
We actually send three notices out.
Okay. And each year, every person has a personalized pin or a personal pin that they use to add?
That is just the a new way the last few years. Before, it was you had the assessment form that you actually filled out.
Okay. So do we have anything that should? So I guess, when was the last time you guys sent something to him? Was it in 2018? And we haven't sent anything?
No, no. Again, we send out every year that anybody's in our system, we send out notices to those people.
So so he would have, we would have sent one this year to his address, correct?
If.
Because that gets sent out in January?
No.
No, okay.
Correct me. Since he hadn't been assessed since 2018, his count would have been inactive. So at that time, no, he wouldn't have got those.
Okay. And so I'm confused, though. So you 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 bought a car, you registered in '20, right?
Bought the bought the car in August of 2021.
'21, okay. And you got it tagged for two years, so the tags were due now, right?
No.
No?
If they were for two years, I don't know because I sold it within the year.
Okay.
And I'm taxed on it accordingly here. But to license that vehicle, to actually put tags on it, plate on it, I had to show personal property taxes.
So what car, what brought what brought all this up to our attention right now?
What what brought this, what brought this to the attention now is when I went to the assessor, they said I had paid no taxes since 2018, which.
And you have a Chevy Silverado 2,500?
Right, which was bought here in Liberty.
And when did you buy that?
That was bought in, I believe, 2018.
So you bought it in 2018?
Sold it in 2019 or 2020. Probably 2019, I'm thinking.
Okay.
But regardless, so bought it, sold it, bought this car that's also on this tax bill in 2021.
And this is the Buick?
This is the Buick.
You bought this in 2021?
August of 2021.
Okay.
And then sold it almost a year exactly later, maybe it was a little bit longer than that, but it they have the info on that. So.
So you came to the courthouse and for what reason to find, and you found out that you owed back taxes?
Right, which I haven't had any problems licensing the previous vehicles.
So what brought you to the courthouse?
What brought me to the courthouse was licensing another vehicle.
What vehicle were you trying to license?
It was a 2005 Chevy pickup.
Okay. And when did you buy that car?
Just this last July or June or it's July.
So you bought a new truck in July, and you needed to license it, and you needed to get your property tax statement, and that's when they told you you hadn't paid since 2018?
Correct.
Okay.
Which, and it's not new to me to come and pick up a property tax statement to go license a vehicle. That is not new. So I would have had to go do that to get that white truck, the 15. I would have had to do that to get this 2021 car.
So the the Chevy 2,500 that you owned, you bought '18 and sold in '19 or '20, you owned that on January 1 of that year, right?
Of 2021, yes, I did.
So you should have you should have reported that at that time?
Yeah, if if I got, well, I didn't know that I owned it on the 1st of January. I sold it prior to that in 2020.
All right, so you so but you bought it in '18, you said?
I'm sorry, there's two different trucks. So I bought yet after I bought the the one that we established was the wrong one. But I did buy that in 2019 or 2020, one of the two, and sold it in 2020. I only had it like a year.
But did you own it on January 1?
Well, I had sold it in December of 2020.
But you bought it when?
But I bought it.
Yeah, when did you buy it?
I would have bought it that year earlier, way earlier that year of 2020 or 2020, either 20.
So you're saying you didn't own it on January, in January of '19 or January of '20?
No, I did own it in January of '20. I did not own it in January of 2021.
Okay, so if you if did you report it on your January 2020 property tax?
I don't know. I couldn't tell you.
All right. So I think that's what the problem is, right, Tracy? Okay. So then the Buick, you bought that in 2020, August of '21, and you sold it in 2022. Did you report that on your 2022 personal property tax self-report form?
I couldn't tell you if 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 I did or not.
So Tracy, that's the problem also, because neither one of these were self-reported.
You bet.
Yes, you're correct, Commissioner. The Buick was purchased 8/5 of 2021, so in that, he wouldn't have had to assess it for till 2022. I assume that's why Mr. Rakovsky came in this month, is because he needed tags for it, and that's why when we found it out that it needed to be added as an assessment. And his to back to the original comment that we started out with on the truck of getting the taxes paid, well, if he had paid his 2018 taxes and purchased the truck in 2019, you wouldn't need tags on it until 2022 or '21.
Okay.
And in that turn, he sold the pickup and wouldn't have had to have got licensed it, and evidently, the new person that didn't license it. But we have seen instances that the DMV has licensed vehicles without approval of paid taxes. So there's another part of communication with the DMV. And the logistics of that, and we did talk about this at one time, would be a nightmare to try to figure out how we would, you know, keep in contact with the state because myself and Barbara can both attest to that, we have easily probably over 50 or 100 vehicles every single day that is have some sort of issue like this. So we would almost have to have a live phone conversation all day long, every single day with the DMV to be able to work together. It's just, you know, the difference is State of Missouri and the County of Clay, two different entities. So that's why the state legislature has made it a self-reporting state.
Okay, so hey, Tracy, this year, since he's active, he will get a postcard to report what he owns, correct?
Absolutely. Every January 1, we send out our assessment reminders. And I believe in March or the towards the end of February, we'll send out a reminder, hey, you have to have these in before March 31st. March 31st gets closer, we'll send out a third one for the people that we didn't receive them on to just let them know you will be penalized after March 31st if we don't receive the assessment. So there are three that go out every single year.
So when he gets that, all he has to do is just go out to the website, enter the PIN, fill out the form, boom, done?
Yeah, I mean, and the website, you know, if some people don't like using online, we have a chat line on the on the website. You can call us, come into two of our locations, we'll do it right there over the counter. Honestly, I mean, that's usually the easiest way for a lot of people is just have us do it right there for you.
My father-in-law doesn't like doing it, so I have to fill his out form.
Yeah, and and you know, we have a lot of taxpayers that actually request the old paper form, and we can we can actually mark your account, too. If that's the way you want it, we'll actually send you the form every year if that's the easiest way for people to do it.
Okay. All right. All right, that's that's all I had. So the issue is he didn't report that Chevy Silverado 2,500 or the Buick. So, okay, that helps me. Thanks.
I would like to give the applicant one, you know, the last word on this. So if the applicant could go ahead and and sum up his thoughts, then if I would entertain a motion from the commission, and I would remind that when you make that motion, please indicate the box checked for that motion. Would that please proceed with your closing remarks?
I just just have been frustrated. I've never had an issue like this. I've never been accused of not doing my due diligence to pay taxes. That's never happened. And I feel like this has been brought up, like, again, it's your fault for not taking care of all this stuff, and there is a degree of fault on my part, but I pay for it. And in my mind, I'd rather pay less than more. So in my mind, I do my due diligence to take care of what I need to as soon as I need to. Like I said, I wouldn't have been able to license the previous two vehicles without a property tax statement. The gentleman just said that there's about 100 that go through in a year that aren't. I can't believe that would happen to me at least twice. That it makes sense to not get a form in the mail for the vehicles. I don't know how I'd overlook if there are three forms sent to the house, spread over several years, and not looking for that because you're not thinking about that. Things just happen. You handle it as they come. That's what I've been doing my whole life. You take it as it comes, you handle it, and you move on. This is a situation that that really bothered me, and it makes me wonder how many other people are in this situation and don't say a word. I happen to have talked to a couple of Liberty police officers that work for the city of Liberty and have found themselves in similar situations. Then they just pay it and move along because they can't fight City Hall, if you will, which I thought was pretty interesting. So I thought it was important enough for me to bring it up. It's not something to just wash underneath the table and say, hey, that guy didn't do his job. You know, I feel like there's there's more, there's enough blame to go around between the state and the county. So unfortunately, I'm the guy penalized for the situation. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. By the way, something we may consider is maybe members could reach out at some point to our delegation to Jeff City and perhaps think in terms of some sort of a remedy with the situation. Clearly, that will take us some time, but we we have time before they go back into session. So that might be something to consider. With that, Commissioner Withington?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we approve 2023-251 with the box checked denied.
Motion has been made for the approval of 2023-251 with the box marked denied indicated. Further discussion? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Withington?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. That brings us to the next item on our regular agenda. That would be 2023-249. Administrator?
Resolution 2023-249 is consideration of invoice payments for the Clay County Prosecutor's Office from July 14th to July 25th for eight invoices totaling $1,194.45.
Is there anyone from the prosecutor's office or any other information related to that, Administrator? Are there any questions on this? If not, is there a motion related to 2023-249? Commissioner Carpenter?
I move that we approve 2023-249.
Motion has been made for the approval of 2023-249. Any further discussion? I see none. You are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
I'll recuse myself.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Withington?
Yes.
Motion passes, four in favor, one recusal.
Thank you. That brings us to item 2023-250. Administrator?
Resolution 2023-250 is the consideration of a term and supply contract with Atlas Docs LLC for dock parts, and Director Driscoll is here to provide information to the commission.
Mike Driscoll, Clay County Parks Director. This resolution, we would ask for the approval to award this bid to Atlas Docs. They were the best and lowest response for our proposal for dock parts. We've been using them for at least the last 10 years, I think. Normal wear and tear on our docks, you know, storm damage occasionally. We usually have the need to get parts and sometimes in a hurry if possible, and sometimes in large amounts, and this award would allow us to do that. So we just asked for the award of this proposal to Atlas Docs for dock parts.
Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, is there a motion for 2023-250? Commissioner Carpenter?
Thank you, Commissioner. I move that we approve 2023-250.
Motion has been made for approval of 2023-250. Further discussion? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close. I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Withington?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Excuse me. That brings us to the final issue on our regular agenda, and that would be 2023, excuse me, 2023-248. Administrator?
Resolution 2023-248 is consideration of payments for July 14th through July 25th for 499 invoices totaling $1,353,098.1.
Commissioner Lawson, you requested this be put on regular. Would you like to be recognized?
Yes, thank you very much. Before I start, let me just say, I'm not trying to hold anybody's feet to the fire or anything, but when I see something come in for over a million dollars for one month, I feel that I'm obligated to really scrutinize those items and just ask questions. And it's, sometimes maybe it's just more for me to understand the goings-on because I still am relatively new. So I just want to make sure I'm approving the right thing for the people that got me here. So with that, a couple of items that I just wanted to ask about, and I know that this is probably something that I know somebody can, the, on, on, there was an item here for economic development. It was called for...
Page number, so it's easier for us to follow what you're saying.
Oh, I apologize. Page four.
Page four, thank you.
Sure, that'd help, wouldn't it? And it's about, in the bottom fourth.
Thank you.
It says 1000720AC, as in Charlie, nine.
Okay.
Can anybody tell me what that hundred thousand was for? It says professional, hundred thousand.
If I could answer that, please.
Please proceed.
That is the professional services contract with the EDC, the annual contract, that the commission just approved recently.
Okay, great. Okay. That makes perfect sense. I approve that. Okay. Oh, I wanted, I'm glad I see the sheriff here. I was going to ask you something. I noticed that you do a lot at Hunt's, which I, I know them, they're a good company. When, when you take your cars in for care, before that's done, is there a bidlet? Or is this somebody that you know does a good job, and so that's where you like to take them?
Good evening, Commissioners. Will Aiken, Sheriff of Clay County. And if I heard you right, Commissioner Lawson is, actually, just do me a favor, repeat the question one more time.
Okay. You weren't listening to me, were you?
No, it's just kind of hard to hear in here, and it's really hot and muggy, and I'm trying to focus on you, but it's really hard.
Sure, sure. Hunt's Car Care.
Yes.
I noticed that, you know, there's a lot that I know has to be done for your cars, and I know this is out of your budget, but I just wondered if there, as you go forward and you do these, do you get a bid from other places? Or is this the one we've always used, and so we just continue on?
So periodically, we send out RFPs for other, to give opportunities for other automotive services companies to bid on our contract. And Hunt's is typically the one that is awarded the, the bid because they're the only ones who put in for it. That's something that we're looking into to find out why, but as you can imagine, it's expensive, and prices keep going up. And, you know, Hunt's has been really good about working with us and trying to keep expenses down. But this is also forcing us to have to look at other avenues. As an example, I will be requesting our own mechanic going into next year's budget because at least we can minimize the amount of work done on brakes, oil changes, and really simple things. And then the larger items, we can actually take to Hunt's or a transmission shop so we can have those worked on there and reduce the overall cost that we're spending on keeping up our fleet. Now, I will say with our aging fleet, be forward now, because we have new vehicles coming in, and it's helping us out tremendously. With our old aging fleet, it was costing a lot of money. And I, and if, don't quote me on this, but I seem to remember, we spent around a quarter of a million dollars last year in trying to fix our old cars. But now we have the new cars, and we're slowly getting them introduced into our fleet. But the problem with that is there are only so many companies in the KC Metro area that can do the wiring. And so we don't, we don't purchase the wiring harnesses from Ford because that just increases the price. So we have to do it here in the region. But now with the new vehicles coming in, we're replacing, we're able to rotate stock, so to say. And hopefully with that, it will decrease the amount of cost that goes out in automotive repairs. But having a mechanic on staff and working with the Highway Department or in, in that area, I, we really haven't talked about that yet, hopefully that would reduce it even more. But right now, yeah, that number, it, it doesn't surprise me because of what we've been dealing with, but I, I have a feeling that it'll get better as we move forward.
Okay. Okay, well, thank you. I just wanted to question that. Thank you.
Before you leave, Mr. Sheriff, I had a follow-up. One of the advantage of using a vendor like this is also turnaround time. So obviously, costs are important, but you need to keep your, your deputies roadworthy, and certainly that has to factor in. Could you just, I don't want to take all of your time, but if you could just make some comment on that, that might be helpful also for us to understand.
Yeah, and to your point, Hunt's is phenomenal when it comes to placing us as priority number one when we do bring one of our vehicles in. So we bring in a vehicle, it needs to be fixed. We try to schedule it because we don't want to interfere with their normal business as well, but they're great about putting us on the top of the list, and they get a, a quick return, quick turnout. So, yeah.
I, I know them well, and, and they are outstanding. I just thought maybe, you know, I wanted to make sure that there were a bid process. That's all.
There is. And I, we look at it like once every two years. I've only looked at it once since I've been in office, but, I mean, that was probably a year and a half ago, so we're up to looking at it again.
Okay.
But I want to make sure that we put other pieces of, of, of the puzzle together first before we even look at that, to know exactly what we need moving into potentially another RFP process.
Okay. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, then, at the same, at the bottom of page six also, and, and this is minor, but I just wondered about it. It said Midwest Golf Management. It had, one item was bagels, and the other item was a barbecue buffet, and it said commission. Now, I hadn't been to any barbecue, so I wondered what that was.
You must have missed that invitation. I'll be happy to answer that. So that was a staff retreat where we had 30 employees from across the organization and offices that did a follow-up to the commission's two-day retreat. So they spent a day at Paradise Point, which is a great location for anyone who's looking for a location to have a meeting, and spent the day going through your vision statement. They created a mission statement. They also looked at core values on how staff is going to operate and things that align with your vision, and worked on the goals and the focus areas that you did. So we are finalizing that report, and we'll be bringing that report back to the commission and presenting it to you, but that's what that day was. And so, yes, we did feed our staff that were there all day long.
Okay, okay. Another one for admin was professional. I guess that's development. And then the description was just professional. It was a thousand.
Are you on page seven, Commissioner?
Same, page eight.
Page eight, thank you.
I'm sorry. Down, now near the bottom, bottom fourth.
There's not enough description here. So unless someone in the, one of the staff, we'll have to get back with you on that one.
Okay, that's fine. That's all I have.
Okay. Are there, are there any other commissioners who would like to?
I'm sorry, I can't actually, I think I remember what that was.
Please proceed.
So the county was approached to participate in the National Association of Counties in a leadership program. And so they gave us a discounted tuition of a thousand dollars, which I did participate in that program. It was about a 12-week program that was online with other county officials from across the country. So it was a great program. We're also looking at other leadership-type programs to make available to our employees. And one of them is working with the Kansas University of Public Administration. They are going to be doing a leadership program here in the Northland. Actually, and when the City of Liberty has offered to host that at the fire station. So we have about five emerging leaders in the organization that we have registered for that leadership class. So we are trying to develop our employees and our leaders. So, but that's what that was that you saw.
Yeah, great. Okay.
Any further comments from the commission on 2023-248? Seeing none, is there a motion for 2023-248?
I make a motion to approve...
Okay, you're on. Good.
I'm sorry.
I thought, I didn't, I thought I had turned you on. I didn't see you in the left column. So you were on, I didn't realize.
Okay. Approved 2023-248.
Motion has been made for the approval of 2023-248. Any further discussion? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
Close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Withington?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
That concludes the regular agenda for this evening's meeting. That brings us to county administrator comments. Administrator?
Just one item, and that is that beginning in August will be the new date and time of the commission retreat, moving the commission business meetings to Thursday at 6:00 PM. So the next meeting is Thursday, August 3rd at 6:00 PM here in the commission room.
Very good. Brings us to commissioner comments. Commissioner Carpenter?
No, thank you. No, no comments.
Sorry, I didn't push the right button. Commissioner Thompson?
No comments, thank you.
Commissioner Johnson?
Okay.
Commissioner Withington? I'm sorry. There you go.
It's pretty hot in here. I bet you guys wish you had shorts and polos on like me.
Say polo or bolo.
Polo.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes. The only thing I'd like to say is, to Diana's point, having the leadership group, having them interact with people from other counties all across the state. And in the past, long ago, we used to belong to, was it Mark? And, and then every year, all of the commissioners went down to somewhere at the lake or someplace, and they had that conference, and they, they spent several days in a lot of meetings. And in those meetings, they had the opportunity to interface with people from, all the different commissioners from all over the state. And, and I know that it served this county well in the past because you formed some relationships, you found out, hey, who the Ray County guys are, and maybe you wouldn't have even known otherwise. And, and you kind of shared ideas, like, right now, we're looking at this bill, and I know we've got staff that are going out and trying to get information from other counties. We could know those people. We could call those people and, and have some interaction with them. And I would strongly like for us to consider that in, in the future, that we go back to that organization, and, and the commissioners that wish to go can go down there, and they can interact with some other commissioners. They have great meetings, you know, and, and it would have been great for all of us to go that are new because it gives you a reality check on how other people work and things of that nature. So I, I just like to keep that in everybody's mind, that I think it'd be a wonderful thing for us to do in the future.
Thank you.
That's all I got.
Interestingly enough, my comment is also on Mark. We had a meeting of essentially presiding commissioners earlier this week. The idea was to see if there was any interest in forming something that would be, has become referred to as the collar counties coalition. Those collar counties would be Platt, Clay, Ray, Cass, Miami, and Leavenworth. Clinton's not a part of Mark. So those are the sort of outlying counties. The upshot was, yes, there was interest on the part of, of the other counties. Like I say, it was mainly the, the presiding commissioners. The subject matter that seemed to spark the most interest was capacity-building transportation. The idea was that we, as collar communities and growth communities, have a different set of needs than what has become to be referred to as the Core Four. What we tried to make clear, and I think we did, was that this was not any, any kind of a fault-finding issue. We had Mark staff there so that they could help us as we go along. But what we do need to do is to figure out how we, as collar communities, start to better represent the needs of our citizens to Mark. You can't blame somebody for not knowing what they don't know. So what we want to be able to do is get involved in things. One of the things that my counterpart, Scott Fricker, is involved in is the scoring of how projects are scored so that it, it feels as though the needs of our communities are more taken into account. Like I say, this is an initial meeting, just to gauge interest. We probably will be meeting roughly quarterly, at least at this moment, that seems to be the plan. I would certainly welcome the, any interest that other commissioners have to, to chat with them, and also to get some ideas of how I would, I would like to represent what the thoughts of the Clay County Commission are to the larger group. Whether we will be expanding or not is kind of a, this is, this is kind of a, like I say, an initial toe-in-the-water thing, but I do certainly welcome comments from many commissioners who would like to express some opinions or would like to have a more in-depth conversation with me. That would certainly be no problem. With that, that brings us, well, we can't really do too much discussion because it's... You've got a different comment? Very well. Commissioner Lawson, let me push the button. There you go.
I made, I made a mistake. I misspoke.
Uh huh.
I meant Missouri Association of Counties.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry.
Is what I was talking about. I apologize. The other thing I forgot about, how I could forget this, I don't know. 911. Obviously, there's not going to be the issue of the Royals on our ballot this time around. I'd really like to go ahead and pursue this issue with the, with the 911 because there, Commissioner John had mentioned to me that they, there is an issue that, that Kansas City has that might make our portion of the, of the ballot wording and all a little bit less expensive. But regardless, for the amount of money that we have to pay every darn month, and it's going up next year, it's going to be, now it's 90,000, almost, isn't it, 99 or something like that? It's going to go over the hundred thousand mark. So if we could go ahead and do that now, in this November upcoming election, I'd just like for that to be something for us to consider and maybe put on the docket next time to talk about, and then we can, you know, get into it in more depth. But...
Okay. Thank you very much for the clarification. That brings us to executive sessions. We are noticed up on our agenda for contractual under Missouri Statute 610.021, parentheses 12, contractual. Is there a motion to go into executive session and to adjourn therefrom? Commissioner Carpenter?
Thank you, Commissioner. I move that we go into executive session under contractual.
And to adjourn therefrom?
And adjourn therefrom.
Thank you, sir. Motion has been made to go into executive session under contractual under Missouri Statute 610.021, parentheses 12, contractual, and to adjourn therefrom. Further discussion? Seeing, did you have any further discussion?
No.
Okay. Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Withington?
Yep.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you. We are adjourned. Excuse me, we are going to executive session and then adjourn.